They didn't give up. The library can yes we asked. No, I just have to. Cool, we're seven to one. Better wake up. Sorry, guys. Okay. Open Council meeting, Committee of Hole Disclaimer. The meeting can be viewed in real time online being recorded. It will be available on the village website for up to six months. By attending this meeting, you are hereby given consent to be invisible, online and to be recorded for future viewing over the internet. Also, all information provided at an open meeting of council or its committee is considered public. If you provide or disclose your personal information to us for that purpose, including delegations, presentations, speaking during public comment period, submitting correspondence or written public comment, you are consenting to that information being available to public, including through posting on our website or webcasting. We ask that everybody put their phones on to silent. And then we will call this meeting to order. There will be items looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of May.
Agenda?
Oh, the agenda, sorry.
Second.
Little too fast. Second, all favor? Cool. Carry it. Okay, now the minutes of May thirteen twenty twenty five.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Casey. He is awake. Good job, John. All in favor? Okay. Correspondents for information. Looking to receive it?
Looking to receive correspondence.
Second.
Okay. All good? All favor? Carry. Okay. Staff report, funding options for the underneath project shortfall on Kootenay Street. What's that? Yeah? What did you want to poll? Okay, we can. Any favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we missed a deadline, so.
Yeah, this was already answered.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Okay.
It was there.
The letter's there?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. Okay.
So it sounds like we sent a letter already.
Is the letter on the thing?
No, I could, I could send everybody the letter if it was sent. It was sent by Mary Casey.
Okay. So we now back on to the work is to present council with funding options against the one underneath shortfall on Kootenay Street side project. Does everybody pull that up? Anyone like to speak here?
Does staff have a recommendation? Which? Oh wait, I think I'm opening the wrong one. No, it's just a report.
No, I have a recommendation.
Top of the second page.
Oh, sorry. My voice not loading and it's only showing one page.
Well, that's why you're confused. Right, so. Okay.
Yes. Report is best.
Yep, it says. Okay, Casey?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the background work on it and yeah, getting both the recommendation from CFO and CAO. It seems like a reasonable approach to follow the recommendation.
Um, yeah. I am with councillor, fact though, like we had talked a lot about the asset management plan a year ago. And we had to do items and then. So it'd be good to drop, like pull that back out.
These are the type of reports I like to see, you know, simple, concise and answers our questions. Without a whole lot of stuff to read. I guess if I had a question is, why would we choose to deplete the growing communities fund rather than Community Works? Because Community Works, we get a receipt of funds every year where growing community funds. I don't think we do, do we?
Yes, we do.
Really? Oh, okay. So both of these can be expect to be expected to be replenished at some point in time?
The growing communities fund isn't that one time investment that we got? I thought that's what it was.
Uh, it's, it's come back every five years.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I don't, I wouldn't.
There was a one time.
That was given from COVID, COVID time, I think, one time event at that time. But growing, no, growing community.
I don't think it's coming back.
Every five years, there is a, some sort of funding, it comes through us, but not as extensive, like two hundred or three hundred thousand. But every year it comes about forty three to forty five thousand dollars.
Okay, something separate.
Yeah, something separate, but it costs.
Well, I don't think we can guarantee any of these coming back, to be honest. I think the world's gonna change and as it already is, so.
That's why I agree with staffs. Talking about reactive financing because I may all know what happens to municipalities who use that model and end up with no reserves. So my question, one of my questions was, is our existing asset management plan good enough? Or do we need to have something more formal and farther reaching like ten or twenty years? I'm not sure.
Well, your asset management plan put any asset in the queue is what it does and then carries it over its expected lifespan.
Which we, which we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're building towards it. We're not, we're not putting away, excuse me, the amount that, you know. I mean, it's quite a chunk of change in order to actually do that. But we are working towards it at least where we have it in the past.
You know, I have, thank you, worship. What we meant by that is that detailed asset management plan means that, let's say, give an example. This building right here will have all the buildings, all the asset laid out. And then from today to next ten years, what we're putting in and what we have to put, that is the money that we need ten years later for every yearly basis. That's what we talked about here, me and Nathan, that how much money we need to contribute to our staff. So as your worship said, we are not putting as much as we need yet, but we are putting something there. Thank you.
So we had a presentation and we have all of the heat map to have like the risk and the cost and everything was classified. But what I remember was Lisa had wanted councillors to rank them in priority. And we were like, how do we rank which stop signs or which areas need to be paved first? And I remember we were all struggling in doing that. And that's where we got stuck.
Yeah, well, and then we were to rank our priorities. And then it went back to staff and then they went like your asphalt. So they would say where your asphalt would be. So as one example, your water lines are X, right? So every each item, your buildings and all those are all different in different perspectives. So what, what we did from there was that we identified the, the, the high risk stuff was the water line across the bridge, the wells, right? So that's why those come to the forefront. This would, this street would not be ranked high at this point as a to do, but because we're doing something there is what makes it higher. Does that make sense?
Sort of, yeah. Like doing, I understand the reason why we borrowed because the work's being done, but it wouldn't rank higher on our asset manager plan.
To say another street that's failing worse.
Right.
But because we are working right there, that's the, that's the kind of duty of the asset management plan, right? Is that we identify a need. So that sometimes some of them is just no different than our other priority list. It's like, okay, Grant comes up for this, that's why this one moves ahead. These we really wanna see, but there's no funding for it and we don't have the funding. So as things come up, that's how it would increase.
Speaking of priorities, it's a little off topic, I don't know. But I, once in a while I get people asking me what we're working on, what our priorities are. Remember, we used to mail out those list of priorities to people, you know, the color coded ones and whatnot. I think it'd be a good idea if we did that again, just to let people know what our top twenty, twenty priorities are and in a list. Because I think people like that.
Yeah, we did one from last year.
Yeah, and I think what'd be good is we should schedule in the fall where we have a day, council has a day and comes in and we can review everything and see where, because things always change, right? They're a living document and they're a guide, but it'd be good for us to review them all and say, okay, are we still headed down this path or do we want to shift?
I really like that idea.
So, you know, and we spend a day usually and go through a whole bunch of stuff and have lunch and sit here and go through it all. But this time of year is not a good time. Unfortunately, so I think it'd be nice to, probably October would be a good one because then we, you know, if things are changing to the direction we want to change.
Yeah, we could have a strategic planning meeting at that time.
In October.
Right before budgets and stuff like that. And we could do the next year, twenty twenty six budget according to that. Thank you, worship. Yes.
Sounds like a plan.
I'll move the question.
Okay.
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, all secondary? Okay, all in favor? Carry.
And that's just the one to leverage the remaining growing community fund? I don't think we need one for the other one, right?
No. Not as far as I said. I'm stuck. Is it not? Sorry, guys. Let's try this. Okay. Yeah. Okay, council reports, verbal reports. John, you want to start? Okay. You could've skipped the beat. Casey, you're up.
That was good.
You're good?
It's all good.
All right, so I'll go. I attended a wildfire emergency planning webinar through the Climate Caucus. It was called Lessons From Yellowknife, presented by Mayor Ben Hendrickson of Yellowknife. Topics included refining the emergency plan. They talked about creating staff EOC guides as well as separate elected official policy guides. So as to knowing what roles and responsibilities are there. Obviously, you're not obviously, but Yellowknife's a bigger city. I think they evacuated something like nineteen thousand people when they had their fire in twenty twenty three.
It's good junk.
So they've invested to have a specific emergency management staff to, to cover a lot of this work. But it's just, it's good information, I thought, for us. I mean, we've done a lot of work and it, it ties into some of the work that we've done. So such as engaging and preparing the public. They've got that link with about five different guides, which are really nicely done. You have a chance, take a look. There's ones for preparing a pet for an emergency, emergency preparedness for seniors, elders and persons with disabilities, tourism operators, and one from the government of the Northwest Territories and then just one from the government of Canada as well. Some key takeaways were communicating regularly to build and keep trust and reassure without causing panic. But one of the things that the mayor mentioned that they had tried to reassure their population quite a bit until the, the imminent danger was so close that they had a hard time convincing, I think, people to go. So not to downplay or the severity of the risk. Talked about paradox of preparedness, so planning looks good on paper, but if not practice, then there can be difficulties in fully understanding the roles and responsibilities during the event. And then touched on fire breaks, talked about retaining them by adopting them as assets. So making them into things like attractive trails as opposed to leaving them as muddy or dusty road, road breaks or fire breaks. And then just learning the importance for elected officials to learn policy systems and especially the capacity piece, the financial aspects. Because that's our, our, really important that we have that in place so that when things, when money is needed, we can free it up if we need to. So that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, there's some pretty good things in that actual report. I just looked through it. There's some of these points. Yeah, we had had a meeting already with the regional district with the ESS and how that's gonna look and work forward. So looking forward to another meeting with them to move that forward more. So I think it's starting that communication part like they were talking about. It's like, okay, here's the challenges we saw on the ground. Here's what their challenges are because we both have challenges and moving forward and how that made it look. So I think it was a very productive meeting. John? Great. Regional district meeting coming up. West Cooney Boundary Hospital meeting's coming up on the twenty sixth and.
Are we finishing verbal reports?
Oh, no.
Why aren't you saying, aren't you?
God, sorry. That was such a good report and we're all done.
I like this.
It's okay, mine's really short. I was away in Spain. Got back in time for May Days. Just want to congratulate the May Day Committee on another successful year. And make note that the summer busy season is upon us and Grand Galleries up in Gott shows and Slack and VFA are all busy planning summer activities, so.
It's great.
Oh, wait, and I attended the housing meeting last week and that was really good. Beth Oldham, their consultant, gave a great report on her initial findings and conversations. And they have a few new board members and people involved, so they're exploring a variety of different future paths, so.
Great. Yeah.
For the Osprey? There's another delay. It won't be fully passed over to Slokan Housing until September now. And so that creates some hiccups in that the local housing society is still on the hook for paying the mortgage, but they're not actually collecting the rental income for the Osprey. So it would be nice if that was done. It was supposed to be done for June. But yeah, it's, it's been quite the process to move the management over and all of the corresponding pieces. I think a lot of the delays are like very small, final, like fixed, like what, I forget what they call it, but basically like issues with the building or like tiny little repairs or tiny little add-on things that they still have to fix. The deficiencies, that's the word, yeah. So, yeah.
Cool. I guess you're up.
You know, you skipped me.
I skipped everybody last time. Casey gets such a good one. That won't happen, I'm sure, John.
Denver Hospital Society AGM tomorrow night, Knoxville, seven o'clock. I can't say enough about that stage. Hopefully we get some great music in the park events this summer. And I'm pretty impressed by the work down by the New Market and Library there. That's a lot more than I thought it would be. I think it's gonna be a real, you know, asset to our community. Hardly wait till it's done. You're up, John.
Always entertaining. Yeah, it was a good community work. So we'll be making a present discussion and presentation to council that are committed in the next minute hole to look at if this is something council wants to look forward to. We learned a ton of information. It was quite interesting in this aspect of how the communities are pulled together, First Nation communities as well as regular communities. Some of them were as big as three different First Nation groups with three different municipalities and or cities with them. And they're all so good at giving, oh, this is what we did and it didn't work, so don't do that. And just a list of different things. So getting back to your presentation there with you about we don't leave the road, the access points open, they deactivate them. But like they were, like they were saying it there with a lot, some of them groups is they leave them, they leave their main corridors open and only deactivate certain pieces and use recreation and stuff to keep them open for fire mitigation and stuff like that. It's, it's really cool how they all, actually all work together. It was, it was actually quite an eye opener. We got to talk to all kinds of different people and different makeup, so it's amazing. So it's good. Okay, so, yeah, it'd be a lot more. We'll spend time on that. We'll have a, you'll speak lots of different things, so that'll be great. And then see what council wishes are at that point. Because right at this point, we had, you know, this is just us exploring the idea and presenting, we'll present to council. If it's something we want to explore and in more in depth or not. Okay.
Can I say one more little question? Like John, I remembered something too. Short. Recently I had to go for an X-ray, book an X-ray in Nacus because ours has been reduced so much that I opted for that and I spoke to somebody must have been from my age, out of this area. And when I booked my appointment, they asked me if I wanted to change my attachment to Nacus rather than here. So you know what that means? The more people that attach somewhere else means the less numbers, the less statistically we have that gives the health authority more opportunity to even reduce our services more. So I'm hoping this was a one-off, but I caution everybody out there to be aware and tell anybody they know, if they're asked, if they want to attach somewhere else, to say no. I'm hoping it was just a one-off mistake by somebody, but I've seen, both Leonard and I have seen this for over twenty years. And a word of caution, that's all.
Just follow up for councillor Moss. Was that to do with your primary care physician as well or separate from that? Like attaching to?
I didn't say, you know, I think it was implied, but that's what it would be. I mean.
It would seem like a, yeah, it would. I don't know why, yeah, it's good to bring that to attention, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they asked me the same thing when I went for my need.
No way?
Yeah, if I wanted to be able, no, wait until you provide the service that you're supposed to provide here. Had to wait a week, but.
That's, you see, that's true of us.
I, yeah, it's, it's good to see that the province is doing a review of all those behaviors of health authorities and stuff.
Cross your fingers.
Well, just to try and applaud them for actually going and helping side party. Okay, are we done verbal reports? Did I miss anybody?
We're gonna lose John.
Yeah, that's why I was sorry. So I'm basically done all mine. Casey, you're up.
Just a note for the record commission, no meeting. I think last time I mentioned that the third-party rental timeframes we had in our meeting notes were between the hours of six thirty PM and nine PM on through Monday through Friday. And then after six PM on Saturday and Sunday. However, on review with Tricia Davidson, the clear times that are available for third-party rentals are applicable outside of the public usage times. And the public usage times are three PM to six thirty, Monday to Friday, nine PM to ten thirty PM on Monday to Friday, Saturday and Sunday from noon until six PM. So anytime before those hours or in between them, they would be in theory eligible for third-party rental. So there's more than just two and a half hours available at night. There's before.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Anyways, and I can email it to Janif, we need that too.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to get out there. So it's now it's time, right?
Yeah, the pilot project technically starts August first, but that, yeah, we just clarified that because it was in the, the. because it was in the, the report, staff report, only a very short window. But the intention of it was to allow for booking times outside of guaranteed public time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good work on that, Casey, I think we should post that on our webpage too as well.
Sure, yeah, it seems like a good idea.
Easy for me to say, I don't know.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it. Sounds easy. You can send the information to.
Sure, yeah.
To office.
Yeah, it's on the notes there, yeah.
Nice work.
John could probably do it. I don't know.
Uh, just keep going then?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Nothing, nothing for the active, there's still a question about whether we're staying in the service. I don't know if that came before the board or not.
No, it's, uh, we have a Salkamver Valley Service Committee meeting first, and then that goes from there to the board.
Sounds good. Moving along to the Roseberry Parklands. Uh, we had a scheduled meeting for the 29th of May, however, we had, uh, didn't have quorum. Uh, Chair is gonna be, Chair Hastings is gonna be calling around to find out. We've been having difficulty getting people to attend and calling around last minute to get attendees, so I'm gonna try and get to the bottom of that because there is a potential that that commission could be downgraded to an advisory committee, and then it would have voting powers, so. Anyways, that's something we're gonna work on, that the Chair is working on. The staff was present and did provide a verbal update. So for the Three Forks to Galena, uh, part of the service, the cable car is still closed, as most probably know. Uh, the discussion came up about opening it with proper signage to prevent traffic going north into the work zone for where the slough is. Staff were concerned as there was, uh, public coming into the area while tree falling was taking place. Ideally redirect traffic to go towards the Alamo and connect back down to the south side of Carpenter Creek. And this is especially important as depending on whether this work gets done before July, really the first week of July, it sounds like the contractor is very booked up and they wouldn't be able to re, uh, come back to work until the fall. And the holdup right now for this two-piece 85-foot span is some tubing of aluminum that is coming out of the US apparently, and there's some issues with supplier tariffs or something like that. So, yeah, and I know there's pressure, I think the North Silkan Trail Society has written in the importance of having that cable car open, uh, just for our summer season for tourism and that recreation and all those good things. And budget utilization for that sec- portion as of April was at 9%. So there's a lot, lot left for that to, work to be done there. Roseberry Parklands, new brush shelves purchased for more efficient work. That budget, budget utilization is 12% of the $14,850. And Bigelow Bay, the outhouse has been pumped out already, it's getting a lot of usage.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and then that's 518 out of the 12,000 and change being used. Fire mitigations, uh, work has been done below the golf course, but no burning, uh, to be determined with weather, but, yeah. Looking pretty dry.
Too dry.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Okay. Treaty Advisory Committee, nothing, fire nothing, Health Committee, nothing, Sustainability Committee.
Just the notes there and, um, sent a letter to the staff, we'll have an item on the committee, the whole agenda.
Yeah, that'll be perfect, so we can, great. That's good. Okay, thank you. Library Status Committee.
I'm getting pretty frustrated here. You'll probably recall that council okayed Judy Gardner and I to present to the next RDCK Area H North Services Committee meeting. I sent in our request April 13th, I believe. Didn't hear anything back. Was informed just at the last minute, there would be a June 5th meeting. We weren't on the agenda, our application hadn't been received or noticed. Uh, that meeting was canceled, so I find out today, there's a meeting tomorrow. So I've been working half the afternoon to see if we can present at tomorrow's meeting. Walter Popoff is the Chair. And I talked to him late this afternoon, he didn't have an agenda, he didn't have a meeting invite. So they're very disorganized. He recommended a few things to try, so I live and hope that we can make a presentation tomorrow. But we'll see, so I'm beginning to wonder, just what does a person have to do to make a presentation to an RDCK committee that's been okay by council? But I'll keep trying.
So update, I, we just didn't get the agenda till last, like, 6:30. And I checked it and we weren't on there, so I sent out a request. Not that anybody will probably be at the other end at this point at 6:30 in the evening. For, to add it to be at a late item agenda. There's been so much focus on the, on the, um, economic development than everything else that's pertinent to actually this here has been dropped. They're very disappointing when we sent that in there way early and that committee has spent a lot of time, it's like any committee is, that we have, and not getting the recognition that they deserve to at least present. You know, and have the time to say after going through that effort, so it's quite disappointing in where that's going. Okay. Uh, okay, accessibility.
Uh, are we, do we skip?
No.
No.
No, not this time, I didn't skip, I don't think. Well, it could be.
Sorry.
I could've.
No doubt about it.
It's on the minutes for sustain- anyways, okay, no, there's nothing to reply.
Making me nervous, Casey.
Okay, sorry, sorry, yeah.
I make a motion to receive all the reports.
Perfect, thank you.
Second, second.
All in favor? Carrie. Okay, uh, new business, state and financial information.
A little bit. You're late.
Okay. Comments, questions?
We've been through this quite a bit, huh?
Yeah. Okay. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, road closure, Rainbow Crosswalk.
Yeah, I can, um, I can move the recommendation and then speak to it if we have a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, so I was approached by, um, a member of the community who was like, oh, the crosswalk's not looking very good, which we're all aware of, it's like 95% gone. Uh, and, uh, talked to the youth center, they'd already actually been talking about what they wanted to do and just struggling with capacity, and so a bunch of, uh, you know, I asked the, the person who reached out to me, like, would you want to help? The answer was yes. Uh, and then that's kind of just like, I haven't even done a public posting, I talked to staff first, but, um, haven't done a public posting without a date yet, but asked a couple other people and it's kind of, there's like probably a dozen people who want to help, including some people from the youth center. Uh, the youth center said that we could use the leftover paint, it's not the greatest. But on the flip side, it's like we do nothing and it looks bad for our summer tourist season, or we use what we have and have it at least look good for right now, so it presents better for our community. It's also Pride Month and we've got a group of volunteers willing to do it. I know that staff said that we've gotta clean the road, so one volunteer said, if we have a pressure washer, could we do that ourselves so that we can take that burden off of staff? If that's what's needed, maybe there's something that's more that's needed. Yeah, there were two dates that worked for a larger number of people, but we can go back to a drawing board on dates for sure. So, yeah, there's a group of able-bodied people who would like to do it and it won't cost anything if we can eliminate the need for staff time to wash the road.
Okay.
So do I. So let's bring them both.
I can speak to the.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so staff have suggested a flexible, um, window so that if June or if there's dates in June don't work because of weather and because of public works availability, there's more flexibility to, to try and get it done this month. We would have to talk to public works and see their input in terms of others cleaning and what's needed and what's possible, so that could be a conversation if that's what council's supporting. Just looking at the forecast now, what I see in the seven-day forecast, it does look like sun and cloud and maybe mid to low twenties coming up, so maybe there's possibility, absolutely. But just from a staff perspective, it's making sure that it's, it's done, um, with those considerations in mind, right?
Yeah, and I think last year they did it in like the middle of the day and I was like, I can't for my own time, but let's do it in the evening when things have cooled off a bit, like, if we can.
Yeah, I think, I think it's more than that, the heat and the ashels and it stays quite warm then if it heats up the next day. So I think it's, we do have to look at the forecast.
That's fair, good to know.
Um, but, and then the cleaning, so if those are the two that council supports proceeding, then that gives some flexibility to look at when that could happen.
Great.
I know it's a bit harder to arrange volunteers that way.
There's enough people that are interested in contributing that I'm sure we will get a, a collection of people regardless of the date, so. And a bunch of them went to Caslow and contributed there to get a sense of like, okay, what does this look like? How, you know, what's involved and try, try to get some learning from that, so, yeah. I would assume so. This weather.
Yeah, we'll ask them, we'll say, let's along this weather, but, yeah.
So like, I think last time it happened the day before, there ended up being an oil patch right in the middle, so it, it has to be close enough to the painting time that nothing else appears this much strange.
Yeah. I mean, towards a shot, looks terrible now.
Better paint will be better.
Yeah, but.
That requires budget planning.
That's fine.
You know, it's too bad. All these communities, every year, two or three, they paint these crosswalks, they wear out, especially in Canada with winters and that. And I didn't know if it's possible, but wouldn't it be cool to put in a concrete crosswalk with colored cement blocks instead of repainting it every year or two? I bet you they get funding, there's so much funding out there for the LGBTQ thing, that I bet you, and then you never have to paint it again. You'd have concrete blocks, colored, maybe colors for other segments of the community as well, I think that's in here. And then you don't ever have to paint it again. Einstein's definition of insanity, you keep doing the same thing over and over again, you know what's gonna happen. Of course we don't have the money, this is, this is high in the sky.
One of the things that at least the people who went to Caslow really liked was like, it was a bit of an event and they do it every year, they do it every year for pride and people come out and, and that's like one of the activities that they do to celebrate pride.
That's just sad part, I mean, I just hate, hate doing the same thing over and over and over again.
And.
And when maybe you can think outside the box and do something permanent, wouldn't that be cool? And I've seen colored crosswalks with the, with colors in blocks horizontally and it looks really cool rather than just thin colored lines.
Yeah. I mean, that's. Lots of waste to deal with, but.
The group is interested in exploring better options with more time for, for next spring.
It's gotta be a better option than, than it is.
But to deal with the immediate need of, it needs a refresh for the summer.
Yeah, if they want to do it, then pass it off to them.
Is there a veteran's color for a stripe, like in honor of veterans?
It's red, isn't it?
I don't know, I was just wondering that.
I could have seen a, a red veteran's crosswalk. That'd be, see, another, another color for another segment of society, right?
No, it's red, yeah, no, it's just.
See, that's kind of orange, okay?
There's a red there.
That's orange.
That's orange.
This is orange?
That's red.
That's red, this is orange. This is.
Yeah, that's.
Well, they're pretty close, why would they put two colors, they're pretty close to the same color.
Exactly. That's oilers orange, I think.
You're kind of right.
Anyway, just moving on, all in favor? Before it turns into an oiler's emblem of something.
Not theirs, not theirs.
Okay. Looking for a motion on the partnership with the RDC Community Wildfire Resilient Plan. Okay, so this, what this is, is this is, we have to have one of these in order to receive the funding for all our fire smart programs and all that sort of stuff. They basically had a contractor to come and do it all, give us the information, and I think it's good for five, isn't it? Five years, something like that, you remember Jeff? Yeah, five years, yeah, I think it's good for five, so. But we're on a time frame, so. Council got asked to throw one there.
Totally fine.
I've got a couple of questions when everybody's done.
Okay.
I, I ran through this stuff and it says, uh, that RDCK, Slocan, Silverton, and New Denver have been invited to share this. And then in there somewhere it says that the village share the costs will be decided whether Silverton participates. What about Slocan? Under the financial implications part, it says, uh, costs $35,000.
Because at the time, they weren't sure if Silverton was.
Now they do.
Going to, going, going this.
Okay, so if they, but what about Slocan?
All the.
That Slocan already said.
Already said.
Yeah, we, we'd already had said yes, because we, we used this for this last round of funding that we just got.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, yeah.
So anyway, financial implications. Um, New Denver's cost will be one-third of the $35,000 if Silverton elects to come in. What about Slocan? Because Slocan, our expenses would be one-quarter of the cost then, would they not?
They already said yes and they already contribute, uh, wanted to agree to the funding.
So it shouldn't be, New Denver's cost would be a third and it'd be a quarter. Because it says a third in here.
One-third, yeah, it's one-third of.
One-third, one-third.
One-third is good.
You got Slocan, Silverton, RDCK, New Denver, that's divided by four.
No, well, it, uh, because the, it's divided by three. $35,000 divided by three, RDCK has their, for these three communities, $35,000. RDCK is a different community portion.
RDCK has their own.
Own.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So RDCK considered as a, not as a municipality, right? So they, they have their own municipality contribution is.
Gotcha.
That's, that's what it's a community, it's like ours.
And we receive, I don't know, what was our last one? Do you remember, John, anyone? I think it was four hundred.
Yeah, $35,000, yeah.
And Silverton opted out, but Slocan opted in.
I think they missed the deadline.
They missed the deadline. Are they done?
No.
Over before, yeah. Yeah.
Another question too, um, in the slides, it says applicants at a higher risk of wildfire risk class one to three are eligible for 200 grand.
Correct.
Risk class four to five, 150. Do you know what a class we're in?
We are getting a hundred thousand dollar extra for, because we are directly impacted by the wildfire. So does Silverton. So does Slocan.
So does that tell us what risk class we are or what number?
Yeah, we're in the. I forget, it was in there.
One, two, three.
It was in there.
Yeah, it was in there.
I don't remember this, I can't remember right now. Anywhere it says additional funding in the First Nation, uh, number. Additional, additional, this one right here, additional funding right here, this one. I don't know which one it's, but this, this one right here, this one.
And does it give us a class number?
Uh, it doesn't give us the class number, no.
No, it's in the, it's in the, the old report, class number, that's what it's gonna give us.
It's a class, yeah.
Give you a class number.
Because when I thought this right away, if we're a higher class, say in one to three, forest fire class. If we're, say, one to three, and everybody's thinking, oh, great, we get 100 grand, we get 200, and I think to myself, what are the insurance companies gonna think? When they see us as a class one area, and you know what that's gonna do to insurance rates residentially?
Nobody knows what insurance is gonna do just yet. Ain't gonna be good.
I think, yes, but that's what I mean, what. I think, yes. But that's what I mean, what, what fire class risks aren't, are we? Because I think it's gonna have a direct impact on, on residential and commercial insurance.
Hopefully not.
Hence me wanting to know what class we're in.
It, it, insurance companies are gonna be, they're revaluing everything right now.
You can see it's coming. They're gonna run the world. If Donald Trump doesn't rule the world, the insurance companies will.
Already what's gone on in, in the three provinces next to us. You know, it's, it's a distinct reality and unfortunately. Okay, all in favor? Carry. Okay. Did we? No, we don't need to take that one out. Right, case? I'm counting on here. I'm all over the map today.
I see it. Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Perfect. Good job.
Under an hour.
No.
Not even close.
What's the record? As you were so quiet through the whole thing.